And congratulating Ella Kramer.
Congratulations.
Okay, our next recipient is Macy Smith. I couldn't eyeball you because I haven't met you before. Okay, Macy is graduating from Meridian High where she is ranked first out of a class of 381 students. Okay, so I get emotional, so if I cry, I apologize. Okay, Macy has a passion for giving back to her community and peers. Through her church Macy has volunteered her time to teach young children during Bible study or care for babies in her church's nursery. She spends her time visiting and playing with refugee children in the valley, handing out toys and giving piggyback rides. Macy has also participated in coat drives, turkey box stuffing, and delivering angel tree presents as well as helped in the Capitol Easter egg hunt every year. Macy plans to attend the University of Utah and she plans on majoring in biomedical engineering. So, to all four of our recipients, I think as you go off to college, we want you to remember where home is and we hope that once you go and spread your wings that you'll return here to pursue your career and to raise your families. So congratulations Macy. Okay, Michaela George. Okay, these last two are really hard. Because I feel like I've been part of raising them, so I apologize. Okay. Michaela is graduating from Mountview High School. Michaela has made volunteering and giving back to the community a priority in her daily life as an active member of the Girl Scouts of America for 13 years. And if you ever want to know what Girl Scout stands for, you need to talk to Michaela because she has done every single one of them. And she is the perfect example of what a Girl Scout does in their communities. She was a creator and facilitator for the Strong Bodies, Strong Minds STEM Camp, which served 80 girls at the Meridian Boys and Girls Club. She has been active in MIAC serving in several leadership roles including chair. She's been a lobbyist for the American Heart Association and a partner with Buckle Up for Bobby for seatbelt safety. Michaela received the President's Volunteer Service Award from Barack Obama for her volunteer commitment to Idaho where she has served thousands of hours in volunteer projects. She plans to attend the College of Western Idaho and earn her teaching degree with a focus on STEM education for kindergarten through fifth grade. So please join me in congratulating Michaela George.
I would just like to thank everyone here for all the amazing opportunities they've given me. I've been a part of MIAC for about six years and I'm so sorry.
She gets it from me.
I've loved being a part of it and working close with Mayor Tammy and I'm just, it's crazy how fast the time's gone. Thank you so much.
Okay, our fourth recipient is Rebecca Steed. Rebecca is graduating from Renaissance High School and will be receiving, oh yeah, I was trying to rush through. And receiving her Associate's of Arts degree from Idaho State University. Rebecca is a member of MIAC and is currently the Secretary of the Executive Council within MIAC. And I'll tell you what, she's been, hands down, the best secretary we've ever had. We'll get the minutes that night after the meeting, so you can't have her. She's going off, but she's just been a dynamo. As Vice Chair of the Teen Activities Council, she was one of the co-creators for the Food Frenzy fundraiser to promote suicide awareness, which was an incredibly successful event that raised money for the Idaho Suicide Prevention Hotline. Through her church Rebecca has taken on several leadership roles and helps plan events for girls, oftentimes service projects, including food drives, visiting the elderly, humanitarian projects as well. She has been a volunteer for the Idaho Humane Society helping with fundraisers and mobile adoptions. Rebecca plans to further her education and pursue her bachelor's degree in Business Management in Idaho State University, so hopefully she won't wander too far off. And eventually she'll be pursuing a master's in Business Administration. So please join me in welcoming and congratulating Rebecca.
I would just like to thank the City Council, I guess, for the opportunities that I've had to serve my community through the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. I have loved, dang it, I have loved being able to serve my community and the feelings that I get when I do, and the lives that I've been able to touch through it. So thank you very much.
So MIAC will be holding their end of the year party on...
June 4th.
June 4th, thank you. And we're inviting the City Council to be judges of the potluck. So we hope you'll come and help us send off our teens and thank them for all the service they have provided our community. We've had an amazing year at the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council and as Rebecca mentioned, she has an opportunity, all of these members, to touch the lives of many. And their work in the organ donor legislation that was passed this year, as well as the suicide prevention outreach that they have taken on and made this a priority over the last several years has indeed made a huge difference. So Council, I appreciate you being a part of that and continuing to support our youth. Item 8B is under Public Works Week and I will turn this over to Mr. Dale.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I'm going to pop in here for a minute because we've not had the opportunity to introduce our new Communication and Outreach Specialist. So I wanted to take a minute to welcome Shandy Lamb to Public Works Department. Shandy comes to us from, most recently, Pullman. She's a graduate of University of Idaho, has lived in northern Idaho for a lot of her tenure and we are so excited to have her join us on the Public Works Department. So I wanted to give her a proper introduction and she's going to extend the welcome to Public Works Week tonight for you.
Thank you Dale. Welcome Shandy.
Thank you. All right, Madam Mayor and Members of Council, it is my honor to have the opportunity tonight to personally invite you to the 2018 Public Works Week celebration. We are excited to be celebrating our 10th anniversary of this event and would like to have all of you be a part of it. Public Works Week is a national acknowledgement of the men and women who work behind the scenes to make our cities, counties, and states run smoothly. The average citizen will wake up in the morning, they will brush their teeth, use the restroom, take a shower, and as long as they get water out of the spout or when they flush it goes down the drain, they don't give much thought to what happens before that water gets to their house or after it leaves. The department and what we do is very out of sight, out of mind. And if you ask us, that means we're doing our jobs right. So Public Works Week gives us the opportunity to show Meridian citizens what our team does on a daily basis. This gives us a great platform to showcase our city, our department, and our partners. We have two main events this year, beginning with the Go With the Flow Tour. This is the optimal way to get an up-close look at the infrastructure, meet the team, and learn about the processes used by each division within the Public Works Department. Tour goers will meet at City Hall on June 6th where we will hop on a bus and head to location, location, location. We appreciate our council members joining us in years past and we are very excited to have Mayor Tammy aboard the tour bus this year. One of our most popular city events is Public Works Expo, which will be held June 7th right here at City Hall. This event typically draws in about 800 to 1,000 residents and is chock full of interactive displays, educational activities, and kids can even help run equipment, work through the permitting process to build their very own firehouse, and they can even cool off with a fire hydrant flushing demo. Families are invited to enjoy free hot dogs and popcorn as they hop from booth to booth throughout the Plaza and City Hall lobby. Even if you've been before, there's always something new to see and with it being our 10-year anniversary, it's going to be bigger and better than ever. The Public Works Week events have grown more and more each year and our staff has continuously stepped up, taking on roles from partnership, from forming partnerships, planning and executing logistics, marketing the events, leading the tour, and creating activities to engage our community. This is a huge effort by all of the Public Works staff. This event also would not be possible without a lot of collaboration and partnership with local businesses. The power of community is very apparent as consultants, contractors, and vendors come together from the city, county, city and county to make the expo what it is. Of course, as you can imagine, this valuable event is also not free. We couldn't do it without the financial support of our amazing sponsors. We had a lot of great support this year and would like to especially recognize Republic Services and Coastline Equipment for their generous platinum level sponsorship. At the end of the week, any remaining sponsorship contributions go straight back into our community. Like we have done in years past, we would like to donate those funds to Meridian Food Bank, the Parks Department Care to Share Scholarship Fund, and the Community Recycling Fund. As you can see, Public Works Week has become a Meridian tradition. We would love to have you join us this year. Tonight we have a personal invitation for each one of you and a commemorative coin. Please stop by and don't forget to meet the famous Lady Pooh and Hydro. Lady Pooh, that is correct. I will stand for questions.
Oh, can we get more creative with that name? Really, Lady Pooh?
Madam Mayor, I believe that it was come up with by all of the kids that attended. If you can imagine.
Maybe, maybe one of your first official programs to rename the emoji that we have. Council, any questions? I think, I think all of you have been involved in the tour and some of the events and can attest to the, the whole experience. From start to finish, hands down, it makes us proud to show, be able to show our citizens not only the facilities and the service we provide, but the employees that put the face on it and show the pride, the commitment, and the dedication that they have. So any of you in the audience that want to participate, strongly encourage that. Council, any questions or comments?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I'll look forward to hearing the new name. Mr. Palmer.
Maybe we should put it out to a vote of people.
Yeah, we'll have Parky McPoopface or something like that, or something. Sorry. Okay, item, before I get further in trouble, item 8C is under our Fire Department. Is, Chief, are you kicking this off or are we just? John, come on up.
Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm going to be brief because John is really the one that you're going to hear from. As you know, the city did commission a consultant to come in and evaluate the Fire Department overtime. I would just like to add before John comes up that it was a pleasure to work with him. We had a very good working relationship throughout the process to look at where the issues are. And with that, I'll let, John, I'll let you take over and then we'll back it up when you get done.
Okay, thank you Mark, or Chief. John, thank you for being here. Council, I believe you all received a copy or at least a link to the report.
Madam Mayor and Members of Council, my name is John Croy. I work with RSM. I don't know if you're familiar with RSM. We're a large CPA firm. How's that? A large CPA firm and one of our practices has to do with consulting and that's where I fall in with respect to internal audit. So we were engaged to do a labor analysis with respect to the Fire Department. And before I do that, I want to thank Mark and his staff for their utmost cooperation. Met with them, as Mark said, we met with them several times, walked through the process, went through observations and recommendations, and it was very, very helpful. The report is, is broken down into three pieces. We have the first page is the executive summary and then following that is where we go through each one of the tasks. We identify the procedures, we went through our observations and any recommendations. And at the end on page 13, we've also incorporated some graphs that elaborates a little bit with respect to some of our analysis. So I'll just briefly walk through and summarize, I think, the highlights of the report that I think you might be interested in. So on the executive summary, we have the background and in the background, the objective of this audit was to assess the controls and operating efficiency of managing the Fire Department's labor's cost. We had three primarily tasks that was included in our objective and the scope of the work, but the time period of this is from October 16th, 2014, through October 4th, 2016. We had three areas that task is, was included in our statement of work. The first had to do with staffing analysis. And this was to identify those factors, policy standards, and operating procedures that create inefficiencies and may contribute to excessive overtime against tools and controls identified with the collective bargaining agreement. The next had to do with industry standards. We wanted to compare what was in place with the Fire Department to make sure we had best practices and industry standards in place. And the next had to do with the control environment and I'll talk a little bit about the control environment when we get to that task and specifically what that means in the world of internal audit. To summarize the highlights, we compared the city of Meridians' labors and hours with different, we call, peer cities. They were Nampa, Idaho, Bend, Oregon, Hillsborough, Oregon, Gresham, Oregon, and also Yakima, Washington. Our examination indicated the city of Meridian labor and hours were comparable to the peers, these cities I just mentioned, with respect to compensation, percent time worked, staffing, and overtime. The one thing I want to point out was that the city of Meridian keeps very detailed records. We have a very strong, robust system. We keep detailed records where the peer cities may not. They may not keep records in the level of detail that the city of Meridian was. Therefore, some of the data may not be comparable or comparable. For example, let's talk training overtime. So we capture and identify training overtime. Other cities may not. They may just all roll that up within regular overtime. So that's just an example of some, a situation where it was difficult to make comparisons. One thing we did when we received the peer data, we relied on the peer data. We didn't validate that. There were some times we would get back with the cities to confirm that data, but we didn't validate the data that they did provide us. So while we were very strong with respect to a lot of the areas, with respect to our efficiencies and controls, there was some areas of improvements that's noted on the executive summary. We had a situation where labor was reclassified. It was transferred from shift overtime to training overtime by an individual and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. Also, our training hours are about 11% of our total hours. Where in the peer cities, it might be at the top around 4% or 5%. And again, we'll address that later on. And also with respect to the 192 hours. So an employee or under the collective bargain agreement will work two consecutive 24-hour shifts and then take 96, 96 hours off. So if you take those two shifts and multiply that by four, you're looking at 192 hours pertaining to that, where we want to, coverage. We're going to call it coverage. So what we noted with respect to the 192 hours, there was about only 34% of the time where an employee would work the full 192 hours. And that, a contributor to that was sick leave, which we'll talk a little bit later on and the fact, how that plays into that, so. That's an executive summary and what I'll do now is I'll move on to each one of these tasks and the, and what we did within each task. So again, the first one had to do with the staffing analysis. And again, this is where we identified those inefficiencies, maybe overtime costs that was related to the collective bargain agreement. The procedures we did on that, we analyzed the staffing requirements that set forth in union agreement compared with the current staffing levels. We analyzed the hours by union, non-union employees. We also analyzed hours by station, by shift, by labor classification. Pretty fun exercises to get this, all this stuff done here. We assessed the overtime hours for the city of Meridian compared to the hours by the peer cities. We compared the compensation package set forth in union agreement with the peer cities. We also compared the computation of overtime to the requirements to the Fair Labor Standards Act. So moving along with respect to the staffing requirements, the union agreement, Article 23 sets forth the staffing requirements which the city of Meridian adhered to. We were able to do that by looking at the shift calendar and actually the people that worked for the city of Meridian. The other thing that was involved that the city of Meridian has is floaters. I mean, they have floaters that will help fill in on these vacancies. And one of the things that we noted was that during the time of our examination, there was a shift that didn't have a floater that would help backfill some of these vacancies. And you'll see as we go later on how that impacted some of the financial analysis. With respect to managing vacancies, approximately 76% of the union employees, or 76% of the times is for regular time. We have 8% for overtime, getting a total of 84, which is very comparable to the other cities. In breaking that down between the different labor classification, the battalion chief works 70%, that's just his regular time, the captain 76, the engineer 72, and the firefighter 75. On the shift overtime, we have the battalion chief at 14%, captain 6, engineer 8, the firefighter 8. The battalion chief is a little higher and we'll talk about that a little later on on what's impacting that. One of the things we came across is that we have a policy that if you're going on vacation, we give a 30-day advance notice for vacations, which makes sense because we can kind of control that. People can kind of estimate when they're going to take a vacation. That doesn't come into play when you have sick leave bereavement because obviously we don't know when those things are going to happen. But the other factor that comes into play is wellness. We don't have an advance notice for wellness. So what we recommend is that this maybe, take a look at it, see if we can fall that into the same requirements as in the vacation where they provide 30-day advance notice. And while it may not be significant, it would possibly help improve efficiency on the, on the overtime side. One of the things we looked at was how much shift overtime is used for vacation. Because you have those things that are uncontrollable and those things are controllable. We talked about giving you the 30-day advance notice for vacation. So we should be able, which helps manage that and maybe help us not use overtime to backfill for vacation. But what we noticed in our analysis was that 23% of the shift overtime was used for vacation.
Madam Mayor, can I?
Mr. Gordon.
I apologize to interrupt, but just on the vacation, I thought there was, the provision in the contract had vacation was scheduled to the extent it doesn't require or create an overtime expense. The problem would be individuals would be on vacation. That selection didn't create overtime and then subsequent to that, there might be an injury or bereavement or something that, that was the factor that created the overtime, not the original request for vacation.
Well, and I'm not sure specifically, Joe, to that point if it can't create vacation. I know that it can because you have incidental pay too, or incidental time, which come into play. I think they can also request vacation if there's other criteria that's being met. What I did with respect to this analysis was that I said, I took all the, all these shift overtime and say, okay, here's shift overtime associated with those factors we can't control. That being bereavement, sick leave, those kind of things. And I said, what's left over? So I'm assuming what's left over is going toward vacation and incidental. And that's where this 23% is coming into play. And then you also have this other factor, a primary contributor to that, and we'll get into that, is the battalion chief. So we don't have, we have to backfill the battalion chief with overtime because we don't have qualified people to backfill that individual when they're gone. So we have to backfill with another battalion chief that creates overtime, if that makes sense. The other contributing factor to this was, had to do with the firefighters and we talked about the floaters. So there really wasn't adequate floaters to meet the uncontrollable compensate, I mean, compensated absence, if that makes sense? The uncontrollable compensated absence would be like the bereavement, sick leave, and whatnot. So because we didn't have that floater, we had additional overtime with respect to the firefighter, which is around 31% sort of the vacation. I don't know if that answered your question. So moving on to next, the calculation of overtime and shift overtime, specifically with respect to the agreement and the Fair Labor Standards Act. The way our agreement states is in 21.1, it states that scheduled overtime shall be when a firefighter is requested to return to work for any meetings, training shifts, or any other reason deemed necessary by the department that is scheduled and planned. When looking at the FLSA and the requirements there, it's really based upon, there's people out there that believe that it's really based upon time worked. So overtime should be based on time's work. So the point is this, if we have somebody that takes vacation for holiday, or vacation for 182 hours, just as an extreme example, if we bring him back in, then we have to pay him overtime. Where under the strict interpretation of the FLSA, we may not have to. So that's something to look at when negotiating the next agreement. And there are some wording that we worked with, with Mark on that that we may take into consideration. I think it was the city of Napa had some really good wording in their collective bargain agreement that can be taken into consideration for that. So with respect to the recommendations, just to summarize that on Task 1, one is the fact that the wellness time, it would be good to have advanced notice or take a look at advanced notice, similar to the vacation. The next has to do with the swing-up program. I know Mark is looking at this right now, but the swing-up program would be a program where people could go up in a classification and work and help backfill that. There are some requirements right now that they have to be permanently qualified, but we're looking at, I think Mark's looking at it from using as a temporary employee to help backfill, go up a classification to help. to help backfill, go up a classification to help, um, in his staffing requirements. Uh, the other recommendation had to be the floater, and I know they've done this, but under the period of our engagement, we were lacking a floater in that shift C. So, if, it'd be helpful to maintain that floater throughout, especially as this, the fire department grows. And also with the FLSA requirement and looking at that in our future agreement, see what's, and see if we can look at that being based on time worked. The next one had to do with industry standards. Uh, the procedures we did here, we analyzed the use of floaters for the various classifications. We compared the staffing levels with the peer cities. We discussed and reviewed the swing-up program. We discussed the training program with the city of Meridian. We analyzed the training overtime by employee, by classification, and we compared the training time for the city of Meridian with the peer cities. With respect to our floaters, we have an average of one floater for every five to six employees, where the peer cities are about one to four. And again, we talked about the fact that we didn't have this floater on that shift C. And what happened there, we didn't even have enough floater, floaters to address vacation time for, uh, the firefighters. So, the firefighters were short a floater, you know, during our period examination for this shift C. So, we didn't even have enough floaters to address the, the vacation. So, hence, that was why we had a bit more overtime there. So, the swing-up program is one where it allows employees to work in a higher class. Uh, thereby, it gives the city of Meridian a little more flexibility in managing vacancies. Generally, we have about three individuals within the, the swing-up program. We don't have any individuals, again, to address the, the swing-up program for the captain, engineers, but we don't have any, uh, individuals for the battalion chiefs to swing up. And again, this is why we're having the, the, the overtime issue with respect to the battalion With respect to training, what we noticed that, um, that the training hours for the city of Meridian was about 11% of the total hours. Uh, we had mentioned earlier about on the peer cities, it was about four to five percent. The overtime, the, the overtime related to training is about .88, uh, which is a little bit less than we came across on those peer cities that did track, uh, training overtime. With respect to the training overtime, uh, a, a, about a third of that is related to six employees who, who are classified as field training offers that provide training. The other factor that came in was about a third was the fact that if somebody goes on training, the person that backfills for that person probably incurs overtime, and that's classified as training overtime, which is different than the peer cities. Uh, hopefully, that makes sense. So, a, again, so if somebody goes off in training, the person that backfills, we classify that or as, as training overtime, if training overtime is incurred. And peer cities don't do that. So, again, that's another anomaly when we're doing this comparison. When doing this analysis, we came across an instance where time was transferred by an individual for several employees, and it was transferred from shift overtime to training overtime. Um, we, we view this, there's a potential risk or potential control weakness there. You know, we've asked the city to take a look at that, and it may, may very well have been looked at. Um, this was under the old system. Um, so, uh, again, uh, we view this when somebody has the ability to do that as a control weakness, um, but it, that's something we brought up to the city and they'll be So, with respect to the recommendations, one, we, again, we had the recommendations on the floater, make sure we had that adequately staffed. Uh, we also brought up the recommendation again with respect to the, bringing, um, the in-house swing-up program. The training, uh, our recommendation would be, take a look at the training and make sure it's necessary and make sure that it doesn't impact, um, any, our overtime situation. And also to take a look at the process, to make sure we don't have a process where an individual can, um, transfer labor from one classification to the other without the proper internal controls. Going back to that transfer too, I, I forgot to mention, there were some instances there too where the transfer is made and there was no description for the reason for the, the transfer either. So, our third task had to do with the control environment. So, a control environment is really the foundation of an adequate internal control and has to do with, uh, morals, integrity. It has to do with the fact that we have good internal controls in place. We have procedures that are documented and that they're adequately documented, the process, and that also we follow that process. In other words, we have it, uh, it, we have it adequate documented and it's operating as intended. And this all taken into consideration is the control environment. It's kind of the attitude within a department or within an organization or even with the city with respect to the controls. And that's what this is all about. And a lot of times, you just can't go in and do specific tests to determine there's adequate controls. You have to sit, or control environment, you have to sit back and take a look at the entire picture and, and assess that and see what you have out there with respect to the environment. So, with respect to the control environment, we reviewed the employees' roles and responsibilities. We discussed the, the scheduling process for managing changes to stiff, the, to the shifts. We compared roles and responsibilities to the union agreement, reviewed duties that are necessary and unnecessary. We analyzed the sick leave taken by days and by hours. We analyzed the training overtime by hours, by day. We compared the vacancy for the city of Meridian with peer cities. Uh, we conducted further reviews to compare sick leave with the peer cities, and we discussed the environment with the fire department management. So, one of the requirements is to take a look at your procedures to, to make sure it adhered to the collective bargain agreement. And the collective bargain agreement doesn't set forth procedures, it just has requirements. And the procedures, you have met the requirements set forth in the collective bargain agreement. We did note there was a couple of procedures that were not addressed, that having to be with wellness and bereavement that we'd recommend, um, being drafted. With respect to the roles and responsibilities of the chief, we would take a look at that to make sure their roles and responsibilities aligned with the collective bargain agreement, which it did. Um, there was additional responsibilities conducted by the chief. Um, I, I don't know if you know this, but the city of Meridian is growing, so, um, I used to be able to pull out of my neighborhood and not even look. Now, I gotta pull out, I have to look and stop at times. But anyway, sorry, I did, so anyway. But some of these other tasks that are being performed, such as public affairs, inspecting fires, uh, working with citizens and groups are really, I, I feel they're necessary to meet the growth that the city's undertaking right now. So, with respect to the control environment, the city of Meridian uses a software, it's called CrewSense, that maintains the schedules for the, um, the, the firefighters. And it's, it's a very powerful tool that they have. And really what it does is it goes, in theory, it goes out indefinitely for these people that schedules them, uh, for the upcoming years. They also maintain, the, the city maintains a whiteboard to assist them in making, managing vacancies by individuals, so they can see how they can fill positions when, when there is a vacancy. Uh, we, we did mention in the report the shifting of labor. We, again, we brought that up with respect to the control environment. You know, one of the most challenging areas they have to manage, again, is what we call that uncontrollable compensated personal absence, which is sick leave, injured time, bereavement and wellness. Uh, these are, are last-minute events, and again, it would be helpful if we threw the swing-up program and make sure we have adequate floaters to address those situations. One of the areas we did come across had to do with sick leave. Uh, the, the sick leave with this city of Meridian, um, was a 141 hours per year per employee, which was at the top when compared to the peers. There was one other city that was very comparable. When, when we broke that down, um, the sick leave, there was an anomaly, I guess you've gone a call, that was a little bit, it was high with respect to the captains. So, in other words, for the engineers and the firefighters, the average was 80 hours of sick leave in six instances per year, whereas for the captains, it was about double that. It was 161 hours per year and 11 instances for a majority of those individuals, which is about two-thirds of those individuals. There is an appendix, uh, or attachment to this, uh, I believe it is at, Exhibit H, which really lays that out, and you can see by employees, the number of instances, and you can see where about, um, where, or in the captains, where it is higher than it is with the other classifications. So, with respect to our recommendations, uh, we, we'd mentioned, uh, one would be to address the procedures related to vacation, for wellness. With respect to the sick leave, just take a look at that. I know our bank that we have in the union agreement that take a bank for sick leave is 2,920 hours. Some of the peer cities is considerably less than that, so that's something to take a look at. And then also, again, we, we address the swing-up program in there, so. Any questions? I know there's a lot of data in there.
Thank you, John. We appreciate you being here this evening and, and sharing, um, overview of the report and, um, findings. Mr. Borden.
I'll ask you one, just to make.
You didn't want me to leave yet, did you?
No. Um, so, you make reference to the addition of floaters as being a po, potential solution to some of these issues.
Yes, yes.
Does that mean that, that the background data shows that the, the net labor cost increase for an additional floater is greater than, or less than, this, the overtime expense created that the floater would be hired to eliminate?
I understand your question. Wh, when I did my analysis, I, I don't know if I, I didn't do it on dollars, I did it by hours. And I thought we were right at the break-even point when I was, when I was analyzing vacation alone and the impact there. So, the answer to your question would be, yes. I think it would be beneficial from a cost perspective, even though all I did was just look at the hours. I thought that the impact of that individual would compensate, yeah, would, would, it at least break even, be a break even.
So, Madam Mayor, then that's, that's a tough analysis. At the end, what you're saying there is, if you spend $100 on additional labor, you're going to save 110 in reduced overtime, which I'm not, right? So, if the net cost to the city goes down with the ad, addition of a floater.
Yes. I was, well, when I did it, Joe, I'm sorry, I thought it was at least a break even. You know, again, I didn't do the financial analysis. I looked at it more from an hour perspective. And when I did that, I thought exactly to break even. And I could walk through what I did, but I don't know if, uh, oh, okay.
No, I get it, if you're basing it on the hours and hours.
I did it based on the hours.
As to how you got there, but.
Yes. I did it based on the hours. And when I looked at it, just from the vacation standpoint, I thought at a minimum it was a break even to bring on that floater. Good question.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Thank you for the report. I've read it a few times now, feeling pretty comfortable with it. But I guess my question is about the, the cities that you chose to do, to be sister cities for your analysis, um, for like wage, wage-related issues. Um, have you, do you do this in other areas as well? Because it seems, what I know of, like the Portland area, their general wage is much higher than it is here. It's not really a comparable, uh, city. And so, it seems like you'd do something more, either in Idaho or even Utah, as opposed to Oregon, where the minimum wage is much higher and wages in general are.
Yeah, there was, we sat down with the city and determined together which ones we would use. Um, there was one city, Idaho Falls, we had originally decided to use, but they didn't have, the, the systems that provided us the, they were gonna, yeah, we'd have to go down manually to get all the data we want, so we didn't do that. Um, so, what we tried to do is determine, in working with the city, those that would be the most comparable to, um, what we're facing right now. Uh, understanding like Portland may be higher, and there may be some in the Utah area, and those, and I think the Utah area was, there were some in there that was really considered. Um, but we, we decided to use those that we identified in the report. I don't know if that really answered your question, but it was a collaborative effort between RSM and the city, which cities we, we wanted to look at. Uh, we didn't want to do it in a vacuum, because we knew you were more familiar with what was out there in the marketplace.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Thank you, John. We appreciate you.
No, thank you and everything you do for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief, any final remarks or, um, Todd?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, yes. I'd like to address a couple of things, and I'm sure we're going to have these discussions further, but, uh, and I know you have some public hearings, but, but just to address a few things. Obviously, overtime has been an issue that I've been addressing the last eight years. And, and a lot of the analysis that was done by John reflected the same type of analysis that has been done by Todd and I the last eight years. We've had these discussions going back, we've had overtime task forces, we've had discussions with the mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, I remember you asking me three years ago, how many people do we need to hire to get rid of overtime? And that's a complex issue, as you can imagine. When it comes to floaters, when I came in in 2010 as the fire chief, we had three floaters, a captain, engineer and a firefighter. That was adequate enough to cover the, the contract that you have with Local 4627 on the vacation allowance off. We have three people off, and Councilman Borden, your point, want to clarify, those vacation slots don't create overtime. Unless we have two captains off, that creates an overtime, because we don't have the float to cover it. Uh, so, that is, that, that goes to some of the staffing complexities when you talk about how many to get X, right? I know the mayor emailed me about a year and a half ago, and said, our fire department that has zero overtime. And I said, great, I'll call them. I called them, and they had about 20 extra staff on shift to cover the vacancies. Yeah, they had zero overtime. So, our current float pool doesn't account for when we get hurt. And I know a couple of you councilmen had the opportunity to participate in Fire Ups 101. Uh, you got to see and feel, uh, some of the difficulties sometimes in the job we do. And so, that causes injuries, we don't have the floaters to account for that. So, that's part of the analysis that we continue to do, is with work comp, with bereavement, with wellness, with sick leave, where's that magic number? And I have not found a fire department yet that has found the magic number. So, we do the best we can here in Meridian to balance that. To the question of hiring full-time staff versus overtime, that's an age-old question. That's Fire Department Anywhere USA. That's a, that's a body decision by the elected officials to say, what do we want to spend to make sure there's coverage? Uh, so, it's that threshold of what's comfortable. I know Councilman Borden and I have had this conversation many times, where's that comfort level and the amount? We do, do things a little bit differently in how we look at overtime. The city of Boise is the one, and, and they weren't involved in this analysis. They break out overtime and shift coverage and training and then any admin assignments. That's the way we do it, so we can track our training overtime, uh, we know the cost of that. Uh, our staffing overtime, we keep that separate, because that's a mandate per the collective labor agreement. We want to make sure we're meeting that. The reason we do that is we want to keep our engines staffed to meet the level of service that we have committed to our, our community. So, that's the reason that backfill occurs, uh, when we have somebody that's off. As far as the controls on the time card issue, that was about four years ago. Uh, that was resolved very quickly. That was a, a chief that's no longer here, that, that was right intent, um, but didn't comment on why he was doing that. He was basically saying, you were off on training, you got classified as shift coverage, that's not accurate in how we report things. And so, that was that move that happened. Uh, John mentioned CrewSense, that actually does real-time calculations of what we are doing, and we have found that to be very successful working with finance. So, we have fixed that error. Uh, the battalion chief vacancies, we've known that for a while. Uh, we own that, um, the administration, we could have put it on a test sooner. We were trying to work on an alternative solution there that didn't work out. Uh, we own that piece. Uh, we are testing right now for battalion chief, uh, so hopefully, we have that issue resolved pretty quickly. Uh, but we certainly own that piece. Uh, with that, the overtime discussion I know is going to continue. It's a comfort level. What, what do we want? It, it really goes to Councilman Borden's question about staffing levels versus overtime, which is more, which is less. Uh, you can look around the country. This issue, I just got an email from Todd today about an overtime issue in Los Angeles. Um, and so, it's an issue, but I think we are balancing it fairly well, and, and I think that was reflected, uh, in what John presented, that we are not out of whack, um, as compared to the sister cities, as we call them. But we're always looking for better solutions as well. Uh, so, we look forward to the continued discussion.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
There's nothing further? I don't see Todd walking this way. Okay, thank you. Okay, item. Okay, item 9A is Resolution 18-2079. This is reappointing three of our citizen commissioners to the Meridian Transportation Commission. And those appointments are in front of you today via resolution. Counsel, any questions? I know we have Steve in the back row and I don't see Tracy or Brian. Steve, thank you for your service. We definitely appreciate your involvement and your contributions. So Counsel, I would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Is anybody piping up for a question? So just a quick comment for the council's benefit. These three appointees that are before us have done an incredible job on the Transportation Commission. They come well-prepared, review the information, and make the most of our meetings. Again, I think they're all good examples of what it is to be a citizen on one of our city commissions. So Stephen, appreciate you being here tonight. Madam Mayor, with that, I move, we approve Resolution 18-2079, appointing Stephen Lewis, Tracy Hopkins, and Brian Leslie to the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Steve, would you like to say anything? Okay, I would echo Mr. Cavanagh's comments. We've appreciated what you've added to the commission and it's often a thankless job. So just consider this as our thanks and appreciation for what you do. Okay, item B is under a Meridian Dairy Board to come and talk about Dairy Days. Hans and Jerry, welcome.
Thank you.
Hans Bruin, Meridian Dairy Board.
Jerry Madison, Meridian Dairy Board.
We also have Keith Byrd and Mike McGurdio as board members here. We brought Mike McGurdio along to show that we're not all just gray-haired old people. We do have some younger, not very many, but.
Thanks for bringing your token young guy.
It's hard to believe it's already a year ago that we were here, last year, to request financial support for the traffic control for the parade this year. Couple of things that stay the same. KTVB will once again broadcast the parade, which is June 22nd, Friday. Chobani will be back as a sponsor handing out anywhere between 15,000 and 20,000 yogurt sticks. Dairy Gold came on board this year. They will be handing out milk at the parade. We are going to try a small area where we come out of the Speedway onto Main Street as a candy-free zone. It's kind of a dangerous spot where fairly big rigs come in and a tight turn. It's just going to be a fairly short area. We're hoping that the parents will keep the kids back. It's just, it's just an attempt for safety. Specialty Construction, as you can see, gave us the quote again for this year. It's a little bit higher than last year. Some of the weight had to do with hours of wages that they used to, you know, put out all the equipment and the traffic controls, et cetera. Their quote was $5,063 for traffic control. In lieu of what happened last year, their quote was, I believe, $4,300. And bill ended up to be, I think, a little over $5,000. And that had to do with ACHD acquire, you know, after we came to you saying, okay, this and this, this needs to be changed. You need to increase flaggers or whatever. So what we would like to request is assistance up to $6,000, just in case ACHD or Meridian Police decide, you know, we need to do something extra with something unforeseen coming up. Do you have anything, do you have any questions on?
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Hans, you indicated that last year the cost went up because after you'd come before us, you went to the Highway District and they made some changes. I guess, have you went to the Highway District in preparation of this meeting to get some greater clarity about what the request will be?
We send our permit to the city of Meridian, which we did some time ago. And then they pass all the paperwork on to ACHD. It's not something that we go to with, you know, they've kind of changed their permit processing, so it runs through the city of Meridian.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't know if this is a question for the clerk or for you, Hans, giving us some timing. When did you deliver that to us? And then what is our process for delivering that to the Highway District? I guess would be the question for the clerk's office.
They've had the permit request for a little over a month.
I would ask Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and Councilmember Cavanagh. So, yes, the Dairy Board submits the application to us. As a part of that intake process, we submit it directly to John Wasson, who works on the special events and permitting for ACHD, and submit it directly to him. So he has it moments after we have it, so he can start working on it.
And have we heard back from them?
I can, I've opened up the system right now, so if you give me just a few minutes, I can check to see if we have.
And we generally invite him to our meeting, meetings as well. At this point, he has not come to any of our meetings.
And I think, Mr. Clerk, ACHD used to be wrapped into our process. They, over this last year, changed their process that it's now become independent from ours. And so is, that's what my memory serves.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. So they have their own special event permit now, which they did not have before. And we used to have, it was a citizen's use permit that we would issue contingent on their approval. We did away with that because they have their own special event permit now. So they have a process independent of ours. However, we still work much in collaboration and cooperation with them on that process.
And that is correct. And we've submitted that at the same time. And then the city clerk just passed that on to ACHD. And then we please have paid them the fee for that permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, I just wanted to, there was a split last year in the way the process works. And so it's different than it was a couple of years ago. ACHD evaluates that independently, assesses their fees and what roadways are going to be closed, and John is solely in charge of that. So we've kind of, before it was all together, but now it's not.
Not ideal, is it?
And ACHD has the same plans, you know, from specialty construction. That's what the city of Meridian has, so.
Any other questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Not regarding the finances. Going back to you, you have a candy-free zone, which I understand, and certainly for safety reasons, you feel the need to do that. Do you have, are you going to have any kind of posting up to let people know? I just know how people get. They're not going to just get mad at you. They're not going to understand that this is about their safety.
We will, for a very short section, have several signs saying that this is a candy-free zone. How much it's going to work, we'll find out.
We also have to educate the people in the floats that that is a candy-free zone, not just the spectators, so.
Because we, you know, we try to do our best to tell them, you know, when you are in the parade, don't throw candy out. Just have somebody walk.
Yeah, we know how well that works.
It's even in our Meridian video, someone throwing candy, you know, off the truck. I have just a, I know. We only video best practices. I just have a question that comes up every single year. And I know that, I think that you have signed it, but on the west side of Main Street, before the split corridor, we have people that sit there regardless of the signs. And then they want to impede the traffic that's still coming through there. And then they get angry for the dangerous situation that you guys are setting up. Actually, they say the city, so. Any additional efforts in trying to add to the signage, volunteers to say you cannot sit here?
We've, and I've seen it. We've had, and I've done it myself too, we walked up and down saying, you know, when you sit here, you're not going to be able to see the parade. And then they leave and then the next group comes in and it just, so we'll just keep the signs there. The one thing that they were going to do as specialty construction, that little, that strats, well, basically the one-way strats from where we get out of the Speedway till that split corridor, will have one, the lane of, for the parade. Last year, they didn't do a very good job putting a lot of cones on the, basically the center aisle, so that that center aisle is completely closed off for anybody. And then that, so that live traffic will only be on the west lane. So that was one of the things that, you know, we told them that needs to be improved.
Yeah, I think that probably would help. Lieutenant Coliani is, do you have any suggestions about that area? It is extremely, the traffic goes through there fast and can we put up reduced speeds or? I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, welcome to the club. Madam Mayor, council members, it's something we struggled with for a couple of years. We've talked about barricades. We're trying to balance if we're going to demand certain things, it's going to run up the cost of the barricades, you know? Do we put in the big barricades? Do we put something out and close the road down further and it causes traffic congestion and frustration? And so right now, really what we're trying to do is add more candles. And we're looking at using the radar trailer with the sign on it. And then putting people there that just says, you know, you can't be here. You can't be here. It's not safe. This isn't where, you know, you can see the best view of the parade and try and move people and just do it that way and continue to. I mean, we don't have a real solid solution at this point. I mean, we know it's an issue and we're doing everything we can to mitigate it without driving up the costs even more for traffic control.
And it has improved. I remember the first year, we had parade entries throwing candy over the live traffic to the people that were sitting there. So it is getting a little better.
Counsel, any other questions? You do have a request in front of you and looking for your direction.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
I think, again, and we say this a lot, but I will support you guys to the end of days because what the Dairy Board has done in this event for our community is phenomenal. And you do an excellent job of leveraging resources and manpower and getting sponsors wherever possible. And I think this request fits squarely within an appropriate continued partnership for the city. So we just thank you and your board for all you do in organizing this and making the impossible possible for the city, so.
Thank you.
And one little struggle this year, we have, for the last two years, the Meridian Arts Commission has organized Arts in the Park. And that was just a great addition to Dairy Days. Unfortunately, Hillary, who's been heading it up, decided to get married of all weeks during Dairy Days. It just, you know.
Priorities.
Where are her priorities? Oh, my gosh.
And some of the other members, I think, were out of town or busy. So we're going to try to take it over just for the year. Which caused a whole new problem with insurance requests and everything else that we're trying to work through, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
If there's not additional discussion, I would move, we approve the request for the Meridian Dairy and Stock Show cost share in an amount not to exceed $6,000.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
All eyes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. Okay, item C is continued from May 15th regarding a request for proposals. And Mr. Lakey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll give clerk.
Why Tuesdays or Fridays?
Sorry?
Hi.
Council members, should we wait for the mayor? Or should I proceed?
Oh, I have maybe one last question.
Okay, I'll wait. The one I handed out is, the only difference from the last one is I think I added a picture of the urban renewal district boundaries and also an addition of the downtown that's emphasized within that map. So that's really the only difference from the last one. So, Madam Mayor, council members, again, Todd Lakey, General Counsel for the Meridian Development Corporation, Urban Renewal Agency for the city of Meridian. Mayor and council members, I'm not planning on going through the whole presentation that we made last time. My understanding is that Councilmember Burnt had an opportunity to at least watch the video of the presentation. And then Councilmember Little Roberts was on the joint committee. So I'll go through and emphasize a couple of things. And then, as always, I'm happy to answer any specific questions if you have any additional ones on the RFP. Council members, I didn't receive any additional questions from folks, but I understand Director Ariel had an opportunity to visit with Councilmember Cavanagh a little bit on some of the questions he had. I just remind you of the goal of the committee and the Urban Renewal Agency. In this case, in issuing the RFP, is to select an iconic signature mixed-use project that will be an economic catalyst for downtown Meridian. I emphasize also again that this RFP came from the effort of the joint committee, which was comprised of council members, MDC board members, and citizens in the community. That committee recommended approval of this RFP. The MDC board has also approved it. With the understanding, we were going to add some of those additional diagrams, maps, pictures, and things that we have. And then there'll also be a handout that goes with it to provide some of the technical and infrastructure information to those that are interested in submitting a proposal. In addition, with the additional time, we're also looking at more of a 60-day window to respond instead of a 45-day window. That's trying to balance the sufficient time for somebody to put the. somebody to put the proposal together, but also recognizing the sense of urgency we have to get something moving and rolling downtown. So instead of the July 2nd date for submission, we're looking at a July 25th date for submission. And then we'll adjust the other dates accordingly. So Mayor and council members, we're asking for your approval to issue the RFP. And again, also, last thing, I guess I would emphasize is, again, MDC and the city have the ultimate authority to decide whether or not to approve a proposal that's been submitted. And with the city and MDC approving both the successful proposal and the development agreement before the old city hall is transferred, there's control, particularly in the city, currently owns the property, but also the MDC Board. With that, Madam Mayor, council members, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Lakey. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I think I have two questions. First, I guess maybe a question for Madam Mayors. Can I get some better clarification as to why this item was continued last week? Last week? I don't think it was ever really made clear on the record as to why it was being continued, especially without a vote from council.
There wasn't a vote from council, so it was continued. And I believe that Mr. Lakey suggested that if there was any further questions, I, I haven't reviewed the, the minutes, so I can't answer it in all confidence, but I believe that the sentiment was, this was a big decision. Not all the council members were, were present, and it gave an opportunity for their input and participation in it as well. And that's what I recall. So, you watched.
Madam Mayor, I, I did. I watched, and there, there really wasn't a reason cited for the continuation, so I thought it was important that we put it on the record as to the reason why we chose to continue. So I appreciate that. A question, Madam Mayor, for Mr. Lakey. Todd, I don't see any part of the RFP that contemplates or articulates or gives the applicant an opportunity to share what they would be compensating the city in the form of either a purchase agreement, or any dollars that they're planning to transfer the city for the purchase of, of that asset. Was that contemplated amongst the committee? Was it chosen to be omitted, or is there a spot maybe that I'm missing where the applicant would be able to articulate that part?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kavanagh, the RFP really leaves that completely open to a particular entity that wants to make a proposal. It talks about potential public-private partnerships, and the transfer of the property to MDC for development, and the, the use of a development agreement to pursue the successful proposal. But the intent is really not to, to specify whether they are requesting a transfer of the property for a minimal cost, or a number, a particular value. It's really up to that proposal to describe how they foresee that transfer happening, and then that proposal being evaluated under the criteria that we have.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe then a question for either Mr. Nary, or for Mr. Lakey, or whoever wants to, to chime in and answer it. How do we, if we are giving the property to MDC, and if an applicant wants to pay for that property, like I would hope they would, how do they pay the city for property that would inevitably be given to them from MDC?
I can let Bill take a stab at it, and I'll take a stab at it.
So, Madam Members, Councilman Kavanagh, so, maybe one of the things that wasn't said at the prior presentation, or at the joint meeting with, the, the issue of how the property gets transferred, or the valuation of the property as part of this proposal, is really still left open. The, the awarding of, or, so the release of this RFP, and the proposals that come in, aren't the end of the, the discussion, or of the ongoing transaction, because there still is required of a transfer, and what does that look like, and how does that relate to what is being proposed, and with those agreements. The, the basic reason that MDC and the city are partnering on this is because the city cannot directly sell property to a private entity. So if the desire is to sell the property for some value, it's going to be balanced against the value that the RFP is going to propose, they're going to bring to the table, and the city and MDC would enter that as part of the agreement on how they would go about this transfer. So, I think as Mr. Lakey said, it was left open intentionally, because it really is, it, again, if, again, if you were, if you were going to propose a project that would create a taxable value of a $200 million building, the value of the property itself may or may not be a significant portion of that for the applicant, of paying for it, or whether it's as part of the, the whole package. That's why I think it's left open. It, that, it's not going to be simply issue an RFP, pick the winner, and then send the property to MDC, and life goes on. I think that there's still going to be ongoing discussion on the transfer, the city's comfort level, what the city's investment into that project will be, if any, and what the city's expectation in return is, if any. All that's really proposed at the moment is to put it out to the world, to say, what would you do if this property was available? What would it look like? What would you want it to do? What would be the long-term value? And, again, what the level of investment the city would be making or not making to make that happen. So, I don't know if that answers your question. And Todd, certainly chime in if you have other, other thoughts on that.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kavanagh, I think Bill did a good job describing it. I guess the couple of things I would add is, we will know, if there's a successful proposal that's selected, what that number may be. And then we'll have the opportunity to, to put together, if a successful proposal is selected, the development agreement with that entity, and also the agreement for the transfer of the property with the city. So we could address, if there is an amount that's suggested by the proposer, that could be transferred as part of the transfer from the city to MDC.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
I don't really know who to direct the question to. So with, with this process, after we get some proposals, and we have the highest-scoring one, is it simply, we say yes or no, or can we say, okay, you scored the highest, but we, you offered 125,000, and we want everything else you proposed, but we want 200,000? Is that an option, or is it always yes or no?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Palmer, I think we'd have an opportunity to have the committee look at that. They make a recommendation, and ultimately, we're envisioning perhaps a joint meeting with the city and with MDC. I think that could be part of that discussion, that negotiation with a successful proposal. Ultimately, they have to sign a development agreement that specifies how the project will proceed. So I think we'd have an opportunity to have that discussion.
I think you have a little bit more flexibility than you do if you put it out for bid. If you put it out for bid, the highest bid wins. It's, you can't negotiate further. Is that correct?
You can set a minimum.
Madam Members of the council, you can set a minimum price, but that's, that is all you can do.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. So then with that scenario, if we're going to go with one, you have to go with the highest scoring based on our, what's in the RFP, correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Palmer, the highest-scoring one would be a recommendation from the committee. But the RFP does not bind the city or MDC to select any proposal. They could have the opportunity to reject all of them, if you didn't like the highest-scoring one. Like, so you, you don't have to take the highest-scoring one. You, you can reject it.
Madam Mayor. But can you accept the lowest-scoring one?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Palmer, ultimately, there'll be a recommendation from the committee, I think, as the way we're envisioning that process working. And then the city council and MDC would have an opportunity to interview those two proposals. But I don't think you're bound to take the highest-scoring one. You can interview those, and if they say, have better answers to your questions, so to speak, than maybe the highest-scoring one, I don't think you're bound to take the highest-scoring proposal. I think that comes with the flexibility of the, of the RFP process. And maybe a better way to describe that is either, you, you look at the, the committee's recommendation as a recommendation, or both bodies would have an opportunity to score things on your own, and you could score them differently than the committee did.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
If, if I may jump in, Councilwoman Palmer. We spent a lot of time kind of vetting out the scoring process, so I have a real tough time picturing something that would be the lowest scorer, be the desired, you know, project. And so I think that it naturally will sort itself out, and I'm very excited. I had not seen the finished product. I, hopefully we'll get a lot of, or at least several, opportunities to, to vet out further some potential development, and see what can happen in downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Burnt?
Quick question. Thank you, Todd, for your presentation. What if hypothetical situation occurs that we don't select a proposal? Are we able to put out another RFP with different stipulations, maybe, or different scenarios if, if, if we want to?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Burnt, yes. Again, you're, you're not bound to take any of the proposals. If, as a result of the process, you see some other things that may be of a higher priority, and you want to modify the proposal and, and take a fresh start, I think you can.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
If there's no other questions, I would like to move that we accept the RFP.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Appreciate the, the motion and the, the second. I would just really urge this body to, to take pause on this. We have a, we have an order from the courts to provide a court facility in Meridian. That question has not been answered, and we, as a council, have worked to identify that location as the place to provide that facility, if ultimately we are required to do that. I think that we have had that building over there for 10 years, where it has operated in a similar capacity as it is today, and, and I don't understand the need to rush this until we've had the question answered by the courts and by the county. So, I, I appreciate the, the quick motion and the second, but I would really hope that this body takes pause, and, and lets this RFP on hold for a number of months, until we actually know what we are required to do, and how we're going to address that requirement. So I'll be voting no. I would encourage you all to do the same.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
If I may kind of throw in something there, I don't see those two things as mutually exclusive. I definitely, you know, I'm aware of the situation with the courthouse, but I think that getting interest in potentially something happening in downtown doesn't need to be put on hold until, until we have that, because then we're no further ahead, when hopefully that gets resolved into creating something wonderful and energetic downtown.
Okay, and I, I think that that has been a topic of discussion, both of this council and MDC, knowing that these two processes can work concurrently, and there is an exit, if there seems to be a, a conflict.
There's no.
So, I, at this point, we have a lot of things gearing in the, to, I, I think we have a lot of things that are kind of working in a direction that looks like there won't be a conflict with the passage of the legislation, with the, the county stipulating that they are in agreement for a stay until the legislation works its, its process out, that we have other options for a, a second proposal, if we need it, if all else fails. So I think there are some safeguards built into this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I, I want to applaud this committee in, in the detail and the vetting process that took place. I think this RFP will provide, you know, if successful, a project, the downtown to simulate economic development, and I'm, I'm in favor of that. I also appreciate the safeguards that were put in place in order for us to be, to protect our interests, to have control over the situation, and know what's going to happen in that, in that, in that building as well. So I applaud the committee for their, their due diligence, and the time taken to make sure that this RFP was done correctly.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
This is the mechanism by which we bail out the poor decisions of the Urban Renewal District, in giving the properties adjacent to it to the most interested party in this property that we're now discussing. This is the wrong way to do this. If we're going to get rid of this property, it needs to be at public auction, not through this process where we keep picking winners and losers.
Anything further? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
I'm staying.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers?
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Okay, item D is a public hearing on city council election process. I will ask Mr. Nary if you can introduce this. He did such a great job at the town hall meeting.
Could we just run the videotape?
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, what's on your agenda tonight as a public opportunity to provide input on the question, the selection and election of city council members? The current way city council members in, in Meridian are selected is by seats. Each council member sits in a designated seats, one through six. Each election cycle, three seats are up for election, even numbers in one election cycle and odd numbers in the other. About a dozen cities or less in the state of Idaho operate that way. Majority of cities have them elected at large. So the number of council members are selected, whether it be two or three per election cycle, but they're selected as a group, or they're selected at large. So that, when the electorate votes, they vote for their top two or three candidates for those seats, and not by any particular seat number, just the top three. So you'll see that in a number of elections, where they'll say, simply select the top three, and the top three are the ones that win. Those are two options in the state code that we can have. There's a third, and the third is by district. So this, if the council so desires, we can create a system where the council members are selected by district, and the district can be done one of two ways. They can be done like the legislature, where there are designated districts around the town. Normal process you would use is the census, because you do have to divide them up as evenly as possible by population. You then have each council member selected by the people that live within that district, so similar to legislative seats at the state legislative level. The other method of selecting by district is similar to how county commissioners are selected, where the council member lives within the designated district, but the city as a whole votes for the entire council. So you would still have them, whether it's two or three per, per election cycle, but the entire city would vote for them, even though they, they are required to reside within the district that you used to run in. So we currently have the seat method. The question that was posed at the city, or at the town hall meeting, and out to the general public in anticipation of tonight, was, is another method of interest to the members of the public? If so, what is it? And then the council, it would simply be a recommendation to the city council to consider that, and then decide if you wish to take further action, to either change the current process, or you wish to leave the current process as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Nary.
You're welcome.
Any other comments before we see if there's any public testimony?
We do have one, one sign up this evening, Madam Mayor. Sally Reynolds would like to address the council on this issue.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. My name is Sally Reynolds, and I reside at 1166 West Bacall Street in Meridian, Idaho. And I would just like to state for the record, I am in favor of having the city council look into this matter further, particularly because I favor the voting at large that Mr. Nary outlined. I do believe that choosing the top two or three candidates in a city council election will allow the most experienced people to be on the city council. And it will also, and I'm not sure how to explain this exactly, but- And it will also, and I'm not sure how to explain this exactly, but if there is an issue that the city is divided on somewhat equally, it won't be just for an area or for a district. If there's, if they want to be represented and there's almost a tie on that issue for them, both groups would be represented in the city council if they did vote for the top two or three people. It wouldn't, one person just wouldn't be on the city council because the majority voted them in, if that makes sense. So I would like to see the city council change the voting to having the council voted at large with the best two or three every other election cycle. Thank you. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Sally, I'm just curious, have you lived in any other municipality that have done elections at large?
Nope. I've been in just Meridian.
That's okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I guess it's time for us to talk then, huh? Just kidding. So the reason that I wanted to bring this forward is because I've watched the elections since before I was even in this position, and I see many times where nobody runs against an incumbent. And I think that the way that it is currently, it really discourages people from running because it is tough to just run against an incumbent. I think that the more, if it was a pool situation, we'd have more candidates and therefore we would have more quality council members in the long run. There are only 12 cities in Idaho that do it the way that we do, which means the other 188 or 89, there's a little bit of a conflict on how many cities are, but do it as a pool system. So I think that is a better way to do it. And for an example, if Ralph or Sally or Becky or Deb or John wanted to run for city council, but they know us all and they respect us and they don't necessarily want to pick somebody to run against, but they want, they would love to serve their community, it's discouraging the way that we do it. And I think if it was a pool system, they might be willing to just to put their name in the pool and run for something as opposed to against something. I think that's one of the main reasons that I think we need to change it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I ask a quick clarifying question to maybe to Mr. Nary. Of the 200 cities or so, is it 12 or so that do seats and the other 180 do at large or vice versa?
So, Madam Members of the council, so in the research we found in contacting AIC, Councilwoman Borton, what we found is they said, and it's somewhere between nine and 12, that do seats. No one does districts, so every other city does at large except for the, and I said it kind of varied depending on who you talked to at AIC, but, so I didn't go out and poll every city, but they said it was in the area of about a dozen that did it like this. Boise's one of them. In this county, Eagle, Star, Kuna, all elect their cities by, or their council members at large. Only Boise and us select them this way. I think I left out Garden City. So four cities in the county do it at large, two do it by seat.
What was that about?
Speechless.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I don't know what's going on here. I was so distracted that I wasn't really even listening to what you said, Mr. Nary. I think you had said some of the county do it the same way we do. I guess my question is, do the 12 tend to be the larger cities in the state?
So, Madam Members of the council, Councilwoman Palmer, when this question was asked, I also put this out to our municipal attorneys, let's serve, and asked the same question. Why do you do it that way? How long have you been doing it? Every single one that responded, which wasn't a ton of them, there's probably about 15 or 20 that responded that probably represent 25 cities or more, all said it's the way they've always done it. None of them had worked in the city when they changed from at-large to seats. So all of them said it's the way they always did it. And I think the discussion among most of them is similar to what Councilmember Mylum has brought up. It really is a perception of fairness and what works for them, but it wasn't large or small. I mean, it varied. Again, some very small cities, Palmer's is a city that has six, a city that's very small. So it hasn't really, there wasn't any trend we could find, even talking to AIC, of large cities versus small cities, six versus four. I mean, it didn't have any, it's the way most people have always done it. As I, if you recall when we brought this up initially, this city changed in 1987 from at-large to the seat system. And the research I could find, which was really just looking at minutes, there was very little discussion. The legislature authorized the change in that legislative session to go from at-large as the only method you could do, or districts, to allowing by seat, and the city changed to seats with no discussion I could find other than they've authorized this, so we'll just do it. So I don't know that it gets debated as much as this even, so.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
So then as the superior way of doing things, Meridian was just kind of ahead of the game and has 11 friends in the business. And maybe over time, others will join. The better way is they've seen that Meridian does a lot of things better than a lot of other cities, and this is just one of them.
I guess until this topic came up, I think there was questions about our process and why we did it different than the other cities. But I think that Councilmember Mylum does bring up a good point, is it is a struggle when you think, yeah, I want to run for political office, I don't want to run against someone, I want to run for a city council seat. And if all the incumbents are running, you're running against someone. And that's what has always kind of seemed. So I hadn't thought of it that way. I would agree that that is a perception.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I want to commend Councilwoman Mylum for bringing this topic of discussion before this body. It's been interesting to think about the different ways in which we elect our officials and in public engagement and how that works in the process. I don't know of another topic that I've thought so much about, whether it be for or against. I think that there's definitely some compelling arguments on both sides. And I, and I, and I think it's one of the reasons why I wanted to run for city council, to have the opportunity to discuss these issues. And it's fantastic that we can all be friends and we can agree to disagree. And in this case, I think I lean more toward disagreeing, and I'll explain why. When I was knocking doors and in the midst of my campaign over the fall, I would be in North Meridian, and after the pleasantries in introducing myself, they'd always ask me where I live. And I would tell them I live in Woodbridge, central, southish, Meridian, and they'd be like, what are you doing knocking doors here? You know, they were sort of confused why I was so far away from my house, you know, meeting people. And they were sort of surprised, even knowing how long we've been in this process, of just a little bit confused, maybe they were comparing it to legislative districts, but in my experience, talking to people, if we're really wanting to discuss what the people want, I think that the people would be more interested in being represented by folks that live near them, not necessarily away from them. And I'm not saying that I support that either, it's just that I ran into that topic of conversation much more than I have others. I'm 100% convinced that it's tough to take incumbency out of the equation. And I'm 100% convinced that whether you're running against someone or you're running, you know, against someone with, in a particular seat or in a general pool, that the outcome is going to be any different. And I haven't been able to talk to people or get concrete data that would suggest otherwise. I mean, just two weeks ago, we were sitting in a town hall and we were discussing this very thing with Mr. Nary, and the number one topic of conversation in that city, in that town hall was who was going to pay for the special election. I think the first three or four questions asked were, who's paying for this? They were more concerned about who was going to pay for the election to take place than the topic at hand, which leads me to believe they don't care. And so I struggle with it, but I lean more toward leaving it the way that it is because I think this is more of like an interesting discussion than it is something that merits a vote to the general public to change the status quo. So that's where I stand. It's too wordy. I apologize, but.
Madam Mayor? Councilwoman Burton?
Yes, here I am.
Would you be sitting right here, right now, had there not been an open seat?
Good question. You know, tough to say. I sat down with people in the past wanting me to run against different people and having discussions about, what do you think about running against Luke Cavanagh? And I said, absolutely not. I'd lose. So, all kidding aside, my thought process was never about whether I would run against someone or not. My thought process, when it came down to me running for something, was more about timing. Did this time make sense for me and my family? Did it make sense for my job? Do I have the appropriate amount of time to put forth the effort that it takes to run a successful campaign, to go meet thousands of people, to shake hands? To sit down with concerned citizens and listen? So I think that that was, timing was more of a, personally, that was more of my thought process as opposed to who's there and who wasn't. Honestly.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I can honestly say that I would not be sitting here had there not been an open seat. And I, it was the, we had the bigger turnout for voting that year than ever before in history, 17 people. But I would not have run against David or Charlie or Keith or Brad because I highly respected them and that they felt like they were doing a good job.
Right.
Had there been a pool system, I might stick my name in there without having a single one of them out to run against. And I think the only people who benefit from the way that we have this set up right now is the people sitting up here right now voting for this. We're the only people that benefit from this way that it is right now. And I'm up for election next, so, you know.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
Would you agree that it's a hair more complicated than that? Would you agree that there's a little bit more of a thought process that goes into, you know, whether you're going to run or not? I, it certainly isn't, you wake up one morning and say, I'm going to run for city council. I mean, it's so much more in-depth and complicated than that.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
Councilwoman Burton, yes, I'm not saying that the only reason I ran is because of the empty seat. It was also the timing in my life and a lot of other considerations. What I'm saying is I would not have run against any of the incumbents that were the previous councilmen.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
But you're still running against them. You're still on a stage debating them. I mean, imagine yourself at Meridian Middle School and having a debate amongst the same people that you're saying that you're not wanting to run against. Technically, you are running against them. You're wanting to beat them, or you wouldn't want to be running. And so whether you're running against them or you're running with them? I think it's different.
You're not singling somebody out to run against.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mylum, you know, in the scenario of your election, the top two vote-getters sit on council today. It worked out in our current system that the top two vote-getters are both on council today for that race.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
You can't quantify that because we were in different seats. It might have been you and me.
Okay. This has been fun. We wanted to have a public conversation about this and I don't know if council had wanted to make it exclusive only for this evening, if you wanted to continue to contemplate and think about it, ask for public input. What are the thoughts?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
There was a bill, I can't remember how far it got or if they got to a hearing or got distracted with other things, to, there may be a very drastic change happening to the way cities have elections anyway in the coming, hopefully very soon, but at least in the coming years, it tends to take bills like that a few years to get through. There was talk of a couple of different scenarios. One where both options of, one, moving us to even years and having this elections at the same time everybody else does, and also making us partisan elections. So there was one bill that had both, but the results scenario where if that wasn't going to fly, to then just go with moving us to even years. And so with the possible chaos coming, should anything like that happen in the next year or the next couple of years, I think it'd be wise for us to keep things the way they are, see how that plays out, and then if that idea goes down the drain or if something does happen, then we'd be in a better position to knowing where we sit and then making a pool adjustment, or it may not, legislature may remove the pool option if they are to do partisan. Who knows what might happen? But it is gaining momentum.
Yeah, we'd hate to give any local control. That would be horrible.
Madam Member, Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I just wanted to bring up one other point that Councilwoman Palmer brought up at a previous discussion that I hadn't thought about, which is, I think, kind of something that happened a couple of years ago in a race where there are a couple of people running for city council, and on the very last day, one of them convinces the other one to pull out, and so that person that's left in that election is guaranteed a seat where if there was somebody running against them, they might not necessarily win, or if, again, in the pool situation, I just think it would be, you're going to get the better, the better people, period. All right, I'll quit.
Is there any further comment? Ms. Lowell Roberts?
Madam Mayor, just because I wasn't able to attend the town meeting, just a little clarification, Bill, if you wouldn't mind. If we did decide to change it, what is the next step?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Little Roberts. So right now, it's all set by ordinance. So the statute in the state code determines the number of council members that you could have, four or six, how to change from four to six, how to create a district, or how to create seats. So then after that, it's left to your code. So technically, you don't have to make any decision tonight at all. What's required is if you're going to change the method, it has to be done at least 120 days prior to the election. The next city election is next November, so at least 120 days prior to that, if the desire is to change from seats to at-large, we need to change the city ordinance to reflect that. Then those three seats would still be up. They would no longer be designated individually, they simply designated as the three seats that are up for election. The same council members would still be up for election in the next one, but again, it would be the top three. But until... But until a majority of this council directs and then approves a change in the ordinance, there is no change. If the council wishes to direct us to bring the ordinance to have this discussion and debate further, you could then vote up or down on the ordinance. It could be done in two weeks, it could be done in eight months. So it's not, there's no time urgency today. If the desire is to change, you can simply table that and bring that up at a later time if you wish.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, follow-up. Just wanted to clarify that there is no additional cost to the taxpayers, as it sounds like it was expressed at the town hall.
Yeah, Madam Members, Councilmember Lil Roberts, no, the counties run the elections, all the elections are in the hands of the county. They're going to hold a municipal election next year, regardless of whether it's by seats or by at-large, it doesn't matter.
Anything further? Is there a desire to continue the conversation, to set a direction tonight?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'd like to set a direction tonight, create an ordinance to change to the pool system.
Set a motion?
No, well, maybe.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, very briefly, I, I'm not so sure I'm on board with what the consequences of a change might create, but, but I think, I like the adversarial system of the seats. And I think it provides the best mechanism if there's to be change. Our community's big, but it's still pretty small. And if there's concern over a, a need for a change in any particular seat, that's the best way to create true contrast and provide the voter an opportunity to pick, pick a path, so to speak, within a seat, A or B. And if there's somebody who, who wants to serve, and there's nobody amongst the current elected officials that they believe is going the wrong way, or representing the city poorly, it doesn't necessarily mean that the, that those current elected officials should change. And we think of some of the long-term council members we've had and been blessed with that have done good work. So for me, it's the, I think the focus is on whatever the, the election mechanism that creates the best for the city, as opposed to what might be best for a candidate interested in serving, what's best for the city. And, and I think the current system, both, both ways have pluses and minuses, but the current system at least provides an opportunity, in our small city, to say, if candidate X is going the wrong way, that I can give it a shot and run against him or her, and let the chips fall where they may. I think it could be argued that it's as easy for a bad candidate to hide, so to speak, within a group election, just by name recognition, and would be more difficult to take out, for lack of a better term. I think our current system provides that best opportunity to leave good servants in and take a shot at removing somebody who might be problematic. I agree with the intent, and I love the discussion. The intent is something we all need to be mindful of as we serve, but I think the lesser of two evils is our current system now. Not really, a good way to put it, not really evils, but.
It's all evil.
Or benefits, I guess, with the contrast.
Adversarial system, that's.
It's, it's my world. And I've, I've, I've lost contested elections, I've won contested elections, I've won open seats. So I've been on all sides of it. I still think it's the best.
Madam Mayor.
About time.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Councilmember Burton keeps nodding my head like he wants me to, to chime in. First, I'm really proud to be a part of this body tonight. I've loved the diverse and passionate back and forth that has occurred between some of our members tonight. And to me, what that shows is that everyone's trying to do what they think is best to serve our community. Councilwoman Mylum wants to open, make doors open wider for more candidates who want to run. I think that's to be applauded. Councilmember Borton, as always, articulates that we, he believes that his direction is what's best for the city. Are those in conflict? Are those in adversarial positions? I don't know. I can only speak, I think, like a lot of us have done, is to take our own perspective and try to apply that into our decision-making process. And so I know that I, while I've had opponents, I've never ran against anybody, I've always ran for the seat. And five years ago, I was running for seat three, or I was running for seat six. I had made the decision that I was running for something because I thought it was important that our community had someone who represented what our community looked like. I wasn't running against anybody that sat in those seats, I was running for what I thought was important for our community. And I think that we need people that are like that. And I think that we have that here, and we had that, many of us have had those people as opposition. So I struggle back and forth, and it would, oftentimes, when I get ready to make a decision, a little Joe Borton hops on my shoulder and says, what about the unintended consequences? I start thinking about that. And if we move, what are those unintended consequences? Are there any? Do people, because there's now 12 people running for a couple of seats, do they say, boy, I don't want to put my, my hat in the race? Or, no, Councilmember Kavanagh's a bum, I want to run against him, I want to kick him off. Well, it's a lot easier to do that when it's one specific person than when you're running against a half a dozen or a dozen people. The other part of me takes into the feedback that we've heard from the public. And I think if, if I've read the, the written testimony and, and the testimony from Sally here tonight, is half the people are saying, do districts, and the other half are saying, go for an open pool. Nobody's saying, stay the status quo. That said, we have sat here long enough that we know that oftentimes, people don't ever come and testify to say, keep doing what you're doing. So we have to take that into account. The idea of districts is, to me, very compelling, but I think that it runs afoul to what makes local government so great, is that we represent the entire community. I appreciate the perspective, but, well, I live in South Meridian, I like knocking doors in North Meridian, I'm proud that I represent our whole community, and it'd be a struggle for me to think that our city's in a better place by heading in that direction. For me, it comes back to, boy, is there, is there a compelling reason to change? And I, I haven't seen or heard one that I think is large enough to say, yep, we need to, we need to make this change. I'm open to continuing the discussion. I just don't see, yep, here's the problem, open pool elections is the solution, let's go forward. I just don't see that. Is that enough for you, Councilmember Burton?
Yes. So unless there's a specific motion, we'll just continue to have dialogue. We can bring it up in July, and, and maybe then you'll say, we don't need to talk about it any further. Ms. Mylum.
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing. So if we leave the public hearing open, and, you know, maybe we can get some, try to encourage some more feedback from the public.
If, if that is the desire, we would need to continue it to a date specific.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'm okay with having a vote tonight. I think that it's pretty clear where the, the vote may or may not go. And I, and I, and I don't know, by continuing it until July, if it's going to make a huge difference in our community and those who may or may not want to express interest. I mean, we've, I, I, I move that we have a, a vote this evening on this issue, not continuing the.
Motion's always in order.
You don't need to move to do that, you just need to make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we have a vote tonight.
No, make, make a motion on what you want the vote to be about.
I move that we, that we have a, I move that we deny this, this request to, to change the status quo and how we vote from individual seats to open seats. Second.
Madam Mayor, for discussion, does that take action at all? I mean, to stay the status quo.
That is, stay the, it's to not continue the conversation.
Oh.
Keep our elections as is, would be the motion, keep our elections as is.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kavanagh.
I think that when Councilmember Borton started engaging with the city council about some of these issues that we wanted to address, I know that our, at least my goal and mine was to have these questions asked and answered. There's a lot of issues that we as council have wanted to address, and I think it's important that we, we address the issue and bring it to a conclusion. And so whether that is that this body wants to move to change our elections, great, I think we should make that decision tonight. If our, as a body, we want to keep our elections as is, great, I think we need to make that decision tonight. The goal of these is to have these questions addressed, we've been talking about this particular one for a number of months, have invited the public, have had town hall meetings about it. It's possible there's somebody that's out there that hasn't heard about this, that will somehow hear about it, that may bring a compelling argument, I just, I struggle to believe that that person exists. So I'm supportive of us addressing this issue tonight, regardless of how this body wants to, to move forward.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lil Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
The ayes have it. It was a good discussion, and. Mr. Borton.
I, you know, the decision today, and to Councilman Kavanagh's point, that's exactly what we're doing. We're, we're getting off the fence on issues that we've been wanting to discuss. That does not mean if, again, there's discussion from the community, this topic continues, and we're all available for outreach. And this can be revisited if there's additional information, or any one of us changes their position and wants to discuss it further. You can always ask, that's kind of what we're trying to do, is be open about that and, and give ideas, an up or down. So I don't think our, our ears are closed, so to speak, to the concept. So anyone in the community watching, continue to reach out if they've got perspectives they want to share that maybe we missed.
Got it.
And I, I think it is important to continue to ask questions and, and say, why do we do it the way we do? And can we be doing it differently and better? So appreciate the discussion. Item E is a request for reconsideration for H. 2018-004. I will ask comments from Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the council. So you have before your request for reconsideration of your decision on the Lost Rapids, H. 2018-004. It was filed by the Coalition Against Lost Rapid, represented by Andrea Collins. It was filed timely, it had to be filed within 14 days of your decision, and it was. The request required by our code, which also follows the Idaho code, requires that the request be in writing, which it was, the request must identify specific deficiencies in the decision for which the reconsideration is sought. Ms. Carroll has, has identified three areas that she believes are a deficiency. One is in regards to a variance that was granted. There was language in the, in the findings, finding enough evidence under the Idaho code to grant a variance. That was discussed there, as well as there was an alternative that was proposed by the other party, or, excuse me, by the applicant in that case. She's identified the, a deficiency she claimed in regard to how ex parte information entered the discussion with the council, in regards to this type of use within neighborhoods and its impact and design in neighborhoods. And then the third was whether the findings are insufficient with the requirements of the Local Land Use Planning Act, and whether due process was met. The request, the notice was provided by the clerk's office to Ms. Carroll that this would be heard tonight. Our, our ordinance, as well as the state code, says no additional evidence or testimony is allowed at our hearing. At this hearing, now the council's tasked with either affirming the decision you made back in, on May 14th, or, excuse me, May, I apologize, I missed it, April 24th, with the findings, or affirming them, reversing those decisions, or, or directing modification of those findings be done and new findings be brought forward. The, the decision of the council is final in this regard. If the decision is to reverse it, we would have to then notice it for a new hearing. If the decision is to modify, we'd bring those back. But the decision tonight would be final. Moving forward, the council can consider what was in the record, what you, reviewing of the record, reviewing of the information you've been provided, a legal opinion from council as well, from legal counsel as well, on this, and you basically have your choice. Again, there's no evidence, there's no presentation. There was in the record a response by the applicant in this case, which we, which we deemed allowable. They could provide that, but no additional evidence or testimony is allowed at this point. So unless you have questions, really, counsel, it is your decision on whether to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision that was made back in April.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any additional information needed?
Madam Mayor, let me add one more thing, just to make sure it's for the record. Based on your decision tonight, then we will prepare a written decision that will be prepared, it has to be prepared within 60 days of the original request. So that will follow, whether, whichever decision you make, but that's the other piece of the public process that occurs. But again, the, your decision tonight is final after that.
I'll ask if there's any discussion, or looking for a direction from counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I don't see anybody jumping to the front of this, but I've had an opportunity to review the, the request from the citizen group. I've also had an opportunity to review the letter from the, the applicant, taking that into consideration. I move that we approve our findings on matter 9E, request for reconsideration, application H. 2018-0004.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
This was a project that I had, I had voted against in the underlying hearing, but to the, within the scope of the request for reconsideration, I'm supportive of the motion. I do believe that, that the findings and action of the body as a whole were lawful and supported by the record.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lil Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item F is a request for final plat. The applicant is in agreement. Any additional staff comments on this?
Madam Mayor, no, no additional comments necessarily, just to approve, recommend approval, and just the response was received too late to be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Counsel, any information needed? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion on item F.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 9F, the final plat for Hill Century Farms, number 10.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 9F. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lil Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. All ayes. Uh, item G on final plat for H 2018 dash 0039. Um... Mr. Cameron.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, this also, um, as, as of, um, just recently, um, we believe the applicant and staff have come to a reasonable conclusion on the lighting issue. Uh, that was, was a consideration here. Um, and we are recommending approval, but of course, the applicant, uh, or the, uh, the applicant is here if they want to address that at all.
Okay, does the applicant have any comment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Briefly for the record, can you let us know how the lighting issue was worked out today?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Borton. So, Al Christie, who's the Transportation Utility Coordinator, who is responsible for our street lighting, uh, program, had conversations with Becky and, uh, basically worked out, um, the issues that, uh, there's, appeared to be there with the street lighting. There have a go, they are going to go ahead and install street lighting, uh, per Al's request on that. There was a, there was some misunderstanding or some understanding that we were going to require, uh, an additional light at an intersection that already had a light. We assured the applicant that we weren't going to require one there, but there would be some lights in some additional places, and that they could be placed behind the sidewalk so that the issue with the curbing and the future roundabout would not come into play. So I think we're in agreement that we can move forward and everything's okay.
Okay, thanks, Warren.
Okay, counsel, any further information needed? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve the final plat in H 2018 0039.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item nine G. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine H is a public hearing, um, for a very long title. We'll open this public hearing. Who's, I guess Mr. Nary's not going to comment. Um, who, who wants to, um, talk about this?
I will.
I'll jump at it once. This is, um, Mr. Nary?
Yes.
On item H, sorry, I was trying to fix another issue before we got to that. I'm sorry, it took a little longer than I thought. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, item H is a statutory requirement to do. This is to convey a certain amount of property to the Highway District in regards to essentially a road widening project on Meridian Road. Based on our current agreement, we have the Ada County Highway District, uh, they receive that right of way at no cost to them, but we are required by statute to have a public hearing and to have an ordinance to do that transfer. Um, so that's really what's in front of you. Apologies, nobody else was here to talk about that, but it really is just more of the statutory process. Mr. Baird has been the one tracking this with the Highway District. He prepared the ordinance, and he's the one that's dealt with them. So this is really that sliver on Meridian Road between, um, just north of the Albertsons at Woodbury. There's Woodbury and Waterbury, and it goes until there's a, uh, just as you pass the, uh, Blue Heron Apartments, is that one section of Meridian Road that's still fairly narrow compared to both ends. So the Highway District's intention is to widen that to match up the roadway from Eustick to Meridian, or to Fairview.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item?
Ralph?
Counsel, any questions regarding this item? And I would request a closing of the public hearing, and then we will ask the clerk to read the ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we close the public hearing on nine H.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance 18 dash 1776 by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18 dash 1776, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain city-owned real property to the Ada County Highway District for right-of-way purposes located north and south of Woodbury Drive, adjacent to Meridian Road. A portion of Lot 1 Block 1 and a portion of Lot 1 Block 13 of the Father Gilpoint subdivision number 1 in the City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest on behalf of the City of Meridian the deed and other documents necessary to complete the transaction, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? It'd be really interesting.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Nobody running to the podium. I move we approve ordinance number 18 dash 1776 for suspension of rules.
Have a motion and a second to approve item nine H 1. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine I is under our Parks Department. I'll turn this over to Colin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you know, this Friday, we are going to throw a Marty Party to celebrate the grand opening of Hillsdale Park. Of course, you are all invited. I hope you will all attend. Uh, but what we have tonight is a, a budget amendment that's a net zero budget amendment. We were fortunate enough to get a, uh, a donation from the Russell Corporation to go toward some of the event expenses, and, uh, we asked tonight to be able to spend that, $1,000. So we have already received the check, so the revenue is already, uh, received by the finance department. So we are just ready to spend it on some bounce houses and some fun.
Thank you, Colin. Um, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve this net zero budget amendment for spending authority not to exceed $1,000 for the Hillsdale Park grand opening.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine J is under our Community Development Department, and I'll turn this to Caleb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, I wasn't planning on going through many details tonight on this budget amendment I presented to you, uh, last week in, in detail. I recognize a couple of you will, were not here last week, so please, if I'm assuming too much, I can answer any questions. But we went through the scope of work with our consultant. What we have tonight is really kind of twofold, and in fact, there's two different items on the agenda. J and K, uh, go together. Um, but the first one, J, is the budget amount, uh, amendment for the entire project of developing a new comprehensive plan. The second item, then, would be for the contracted portion of that, our consultant help with Logan Simpson. Do you have that contract signed, uh, actually just earlier today by them, uh, and given to the city clerk? So, um, thanks to Keith Watts for bird dogging that here and making that happen, um, kind of last minute. Um, but again, the request is for a budget amendment for $214,954 to develop a new comprehensive plan for the city.
Counsel, any, um, questions, discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Caleb reminded me, didn't, and I apologize for not asking this before today, um, didn't we allocate some funds in last year's budget for this accelerated comp plan process?
So, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman Borton, no. We, we came at last year with the $50,000 enhancement request to address the South Meridian Planning Area in the South Rim. And if you recall, we had in 2020, I believe, like a year or two out, further development of a new comprehensive plan. You said, well, instead of just biting the smaller piece off at $50,000, why don't we accelerate the new comprehensive plan and combine that together to do this now? So we're addressing our enhancement request. You didn't fund, you didn't fund any of that. You said, come back with an amendment to do a new plan that incorporates that.
Okay, so, and, Madam Mayor, we, we spent the 50 on the South Meridian part, or no?
No.
No.
We didn't, um, we withdrew that $50,000 enhancement in lieu of coming back to council.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So J and K at the same time?
Um, no, just J.
Okay. Then, Madam Mayor, I move we, uh, approve the budget amendment for the comprehensive plan consultant not to exceed $214,954.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll on item nine J?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, Caleb.
So, again, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council, K is the lion's share of what you just approved to go to Logan Simpson with a small set aside. I do appreciate the comments last week, um, and like Colin was just here, we'll look for corporate sponsors to maybe help with this, and so maybe we don't even have to spend the, uh, the remaining portion, which is $2,400 on promotions, giveaways, those types of things, uh, food and beverage. Um, but, but again, the lion's share, what, what item K is, is, uh, to pay to our consultant, Logan Simpson.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Caleb, last week, we talked a little bit about marketing and promotion. Is that referenced in here, or is that going to be something that's going to come separately from KC? How, how, what's, what's the plan related to that?
Um, so, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, there are three, actually three separate line items in the budget amendment which you just approved. So the one, again, the lion's share is for consulting help. Line two is advertising and promotions at $1,500, and then line three is food and beverage at $900. I work, work with Rita. Those are different, what they, we call GL codes, so they have to be coded separately. But advertising and promotions are all under the same type of budget expense. Um, but that's what I'm hoping, maybe we don't even spend all $1,500 on that if we can get some corporate or other sponsors, um, to donate things, to, to give away or draw attention to this. Um, but some of that, I imagine, will be spent with KC to advertise this project as we come upon, um, you know, major events in this series to either do, uh, Facebook bumps, promotions, whatever they call them, um, and those types of things, or run advertisements on, you know, in the newspaper or whatever, those types of things, so.
Caleb, and you think the, the amount that you're asking for, then, that $1,500 is going to be sufficient to do all that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, so, again, in, in talking with KC, she recommended about a thousand dollar budget, uh, for that. Um, so I'm just going off of her, what she thinks is, is a good amount to, um, and, and I think we talked about it a little bit last week, too. She, she may be able to help supplement some of that with just her general set aside and maybe earmark for other things. She didn't say, I'll give you some of that. But I think we can get some of that done without any real hard costs. She's willing to kind of help promote this just through normal channels and interns and things like that, so.
Okay. You think it's appropriate? It's good enough for me. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I wonder if anyone's keeping a tally of how much I've spent in motions in the month of May, because it's been astronomical compared to my other two years.
You, you can count on it.
Good thing we don't have a, uh, pool voting for elections, but, um, I move we approve the agreement with Logan Simpson Design Incorporated for the Meridian Comprehensive Plan Project in amount not to exceed $212,554.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item nine K. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Under Department reports, we have 10A under our Police and Parks and Recreation Department. The age-old discussion about movie night.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and counsel. Uh, thanks for having me. Tonight, we wanted to talk about Section 13 dash 2 dash 9C, which is the trespassing, uh, ordinance for our parks. Uh, after working with the parks and legal, we were wanting to move the misdemeanor to an infraction, uh, which really is due to assist law enforcement with dealing with issues in our parks after hours or outside of our director's orders when there's specific events being held. So with that being said, it's currently a misdemeanor. We would like to move that to an infr, or change it to an infraction with a $50 fine attached. I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Lieutenant Arbor, nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Um, how many of these interactions does the department have in a year?
Can't give you an exact number, but there are quite a few.
Okay.
And, um, currently with it being a misdemeanor, it's very challenging, uh, for us to enforce that in regards to the paperwork that's required, than the time spent in court over a rather miniscule offense.
Any other questions from counsel? Colin, do you have anything you want to add? Uh, this has been a great collaboration between the departments to, to find a solution to, um, maybe ensuring that family movie night is family movie night.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I think you're talking about movie night on top of all the other events that we do in our city parks, but I think really this will help deal with the small portion of the problems that we do have at movie night. It's a, it's a small number of people causing majority of the problems for us, and I think being able to issue an infraction immediately and deal with that problem immediately will ultimately resolve the problem, hopefully.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Hearing, no more discussion. I move we accept and proceed with a proposed ordinance updating to amend trespass in the parks penalty from misdemeanor to infraction.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 10A. Does this, Mr. Nary, is the next step to, to bring back the change?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance is on your agenda, so you can approve it tonight.
Okay. Where is it?
I'm looking at it. It's part of, it's, it says draft on the top of it, Madam Mayor, in your packet. Okay, so, I apologize, Madam Mayor. I, yeah, it is in the packet. It's a draft. We'll put it on for the June 5th, uh, council meeting for final approval, and then we can take the draft notation off as well.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve item 10A. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Okay. Item 11A is ordinance 18 dash 1775. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18 dash 1775, an ordinance file H 2018 dash 0004, Lost Rapids Brighton Site Annexation, for annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 27 Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 39.005 acres of land from RUT to R15 Medium Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date. for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? You would like to hear it read in its entirety?
Thank you. Be it ordained by the mayor and city council of the city of Meridian, county of Ada, state of Idaho, Section 1, that the following described land as evidenced by attached legal description herein incorporated by reference as Exhibit A are within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, Idaho, and that the city of Meridian has received a written request for annexation and rezoning by the owner of said property to wit, Brighton Investments LLC. Section 2, that the above described real property is hereby annexed and rezoned from RUT to R15 Medium Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Section 3, that the city has authority pursuant to the laws of the state of Idaho and the ordinances of the city of Meridian to annex and zone said property. Section 4, that the city has complied with all the noticing requirements pursuant to the laws of the state of Idaho and the ordinances of the city of Meridian to annex and rezone said property. Section 5, that the city engineer is hereby directed to alter all use and area maps, as well as the official zoning maps, and all official maps depicting the boundaries and the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Section 6, all ordinances, resolutions, orders, or parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed, rescinded, and annulled. Section 7, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Section 8, the clerk of the city of Meridian shall within 10 days following the effective date of this ordinance duly file a certified copy of this ordinance and a map prepared in a draftsman manner, including the lands herein rezoned, with the following officials of the county of Ada, state of Idaho, to wit, the recorder, auditor, treasurer, and assessor, and shall also file simultaneously a certified copy of this ordinance and map with the State Tax Commission of the state of Idaho. Section 9, that pursuant to the affirmative vote of one half plus one of the members of the full council, the rule requiring two separate readings by title and one reading in full be, and the same is hereby dispensed with, and accordingly, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval, and publication.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1775 with suspension of rules.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 11A. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Any items for item 12? We do have a couple of upcoming events. Hill ribbon cutting at 10:30 a.m. at the Y, and at 4 o'clock starts, oh, it's the park. Is that four, five? Five. Okay. And hopefully that you are all there to enjoy the festivities. On Memorial Day, there is a small service that is happening at the Rock of Honor at 11 a.m., and the American Legion is doing something at their facility at 1 p.m. And just a reminder about Public Works Week from June 4 through 8. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Before I make that motion, just a clarification, the Legion's event is going to be at the Meridian Cemetery, not at their facility at 1 o'clock.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.